Buenos dias, everyone. Thank you for being here today. The Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation Procurement is calling this virtual public hearing to order. The time is now 2:01 PM on Friday, June 12, 2020. The notice of today's virtual public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on June 5th and June 10th, thus meeting requirements of open government law. I would like to acknowledge my colleagues that have joined me here today. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino, Senator Mary Torres, Senator Amanda Shelton, Senator Telo Taitegui. Thank you for joining me here today. The purpose of today's virtual public hearing is to receive testimony on the following. The first is the executive appointment of Ms. Janalyn C. Damian to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Equalization. The second item on the agenda is to receive testimony on Bill Number 283-35COR, sponsored by myself, Sabina Flores Perez. It's an act to repeal and reenact Chapter 53 of Division 2, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to updating the Guam Safe Drinking Water Act, to repeal Chapter 53A of Division 2, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Guam Lead Ban Act, and to repeal and reenact Chapter 6 of Division 2, Title 22 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to updating the Guam Safe Drinking Water Regulations. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4:00 PM on Wednesday, June 17, 2020. Please address testimony to Senator Sabina Flores Perez, Chairperson on the Committee on the Environment, Revenue and Taxation and Procurement, and it can be dropped off at the mailboxes of the legislature or emailed to office@senatorparas.org. So I would like to go over the rules of conduct first for the oversight hearing. So the host of this hearing will mute all participants until called upon by the chair. Virtual backgrounds should not be utilized during these hearings, and participants' faces must be visible at all times. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking into your microphone. Members of the committee wishing to speak may indicate their desire to the chair through the in-app chat feature. The order question will begin with the chair, who shall complete a line of questioning for each respective agency, and upon completion, then the floor will be open to my colleagues. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and shall state their name for record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. Personal inference as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted, and any violations of this general rule of conduct will result in removal from the public hearing by the host. So now to begin our agenda, we would like to start with testimonies on behalf of the executive appointment of Ms. Janalyn C. Damian to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Equalization. So just to give you a little bit of background about the Guam Board of Equalization, the powers of the board include the following: certification of the property tax role. The Secretary of the Board shall certify the corrected role for any year to the tax collector on or before October 31 of that year. The Secretary of the Board shall deposit all the records of the board relating to that role with the assessor. The other power of the board is assessment reduction, increase, or correction. The board, upon a showing of unreasonableness, may increase or reduce assessment on the role in order to equalize assessments throughout Guam. The board may also correct quantities or descriptions of property where shown incorrectly on the role, and this is done through public hearing by the board. So I would like to now invite Mr. Pangolinan to provide testimony for the nominee, Ms. Janalyn C. Damian, as a member of the Guam Board of Equalization. So again, just repeat her name for record-keeping purposes.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and honorable committee members. My name is Mike Pangolinan. I'm an attorney and partner with the law firm of Calvo Fisher &amp; Jacob LLP, and I am also a commissioner on the Guam Public Utilities Commission. I'm honored to have this opportunity to present testimony in support of the appointment of my friend and colleague, Janalyn Damian, to the Guam Board of Equalization. I've been Janalyn's friend and colleague continuously for the past 20 years since she finished law school and joined our law firm back in 2000. I've worked closely with Jan on cases for our clients in just about all areas of the law during that 20-year span, and even now, I continue to work closely with her almost every day. Jan is extremely valuable to us at Calvo Fisher because she has all of the qualities you could ever want in a team member: intelligence, competency, work ethic, attention to detail, and integrity. Jan's skill set is particularly well-suited to the Board of Equalization because she has decades of experience handling real property legal issues, from small residential transactions to large-scale commercial development projects. She's also more experienced and knowledgeable than any attorney I know regarding local government regulation and administrative matters. Jan has been providing advice and guidance to government of Guam agency clients for almost her entire career, including GITA during the early 2000s and more recently to the Guam International Airport Authority. There is no attorney on Guam at our law firm or at any other law firm whose work and judgment I trust more than Jan's. And I know Jan is probably very uncomfortable hearing me say these things because, and this is what I value most about Jan, she is one of the most humble, genuine, sincerely nice people you will ever meet. She's good-natured, able to work with and get along with all different types of people, and she has uncompromisingly high ethical standards in her work and in her life. She cares very deeply about our island, she's dedicated to her husband and her kids, and she puts her family before anything else in the world. Her qualities as a person, just as much as her professional skills, make her an excellent choice for the Board of Equalization or for any government board or commission. I sincerely and wholeheartedly urge the committee to confirm Janalyn's nomination, and I thank you, Madam Chair and committee members, for receiving my testimony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pangolinan. So it'd be great, I'm glad to see Cynthia Kubey is joining us, and I believe she's going to provide some testimony. Cynthia Kubey is currently on the Board of Equalization, I believe, as a secretary. So thank you very much for joining us. I would like to welcome you to
Thank you.
...to provide testimony.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson Perez and Buenos dias, members of the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation and Procurement. I'm pleased to be here today. My name is, as the Madam Chairman indicated, Cynthia E. Kubey, and I'm an attorney licensed to practice law for the past 28 years in all the local courts of Guam, the Federal District Court of Guam, and the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. I'm pleased to be here today to present my testimony in support of the confirmation of Janalyn C. Damian to serve as a member of the Board of Equalization. Many of you may be aware or know this, but I also am currently a member and chairperson of the Board of Equalization. I've known Janalyn for over 10 years as a result of our professional association with the practice of law in Guam. As my colleague Attorney Perez, Attorney pointed out a few minutes ago, Pangolinan, Janalyn is an intelligent and competent individual who possesses the requisite knowledge, experience, and skills necessary to serve on the Board of Equalization. Janalyn has served on several committees and boards with the judiciary of Guam and with the Guam Bar Association, particularly during my tenure as president for the Guam Bar from the years of 2009 to 2015. Janalyn understands the role and purpose of serving on boards and commissions and has made a valuable contribution while serving as a member with these respective entities. Additionally, as a highly valued attorney with her firm, as Attorney Pangolinan pointed out, Calvo Fisher &amp; Jacob, Janalyn serves as legal counsel for several of their clients who are members and/or directors of various boards and is responsible for providing sound legal guidance on issues requested by her board members. Equally important, Janalyn is a hard-working and conscientious individual who will address the issues and make the best decision for the organization that she serves. I am confident that her knowledge, expertise, experience, combined with her commitment and contribution to our community, will make her a valuable asset to serve on the Board of Equalization, and I urge all of you members and senators for her favorable confirmation of her appointment. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, and I thank you for this opportunity to present testimony today.
This is Massey, Attorney Kubey, and thank you for your service too as well. So now we move on to the nominee. So I'd like to invite Ms. Damian to provide testimony regarding her nomination. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair and senators, for giving me this opportunity to provide testimony in support of my appointment as a member of the Board of Equalization. Thank you to Mike and Kubey, as we call her, for providing testimony in support of my appointment as well. I would like to begin by telling you a little bit about myself, as many of you may not know me. I am a daughter of Guam and was raised in the village of Baragata. My parents are David and Winita Cruz, both of whom are public servants, having retired from the government of Guam. My dad is an assistant economist at the Department of Labor, and my mom is a teacher for the Department of Education. I attended PC Lujan Elementary, St. Anthony Catholic School, and I graduated from Notre Dame High School in 1993. I earned my bachelor's degree from Loyola Marymount University in Los Angeles. Upon graduating from Loyola Law in 2000, as Mike said, I returned to Guam and started my legal career at the law firm now known as Calvo Fisher &amp; Jacob. I'm married to Omar Damian, and my parents-in-law are Charlie and Doreen Damian. Omar and I have three daughters, Kaia, who will be starting her junior year at ND, Callie, who just graduated from St. Anthony, and will be joining Kaia at ND, and my youngest is Kamiya, who will be starting 4th grade in August. As you can see, I am a working mom, and I did not accept the governor's appointment to the board hastily. I knew that if I accepted the appointment, I must be willing to commit my time to perform the duties of a board member. I would like to assure you that I am fully committed and eager to begin working with the other board members should this body confirm my appointment. When I mention to family or friends that I have been appointed to the Board of Equalization, their first question is usually, "What does that board do?" Not many people are aware of the Board of Equalization and the important work it does. Early in my career, I worked on a case brought by Governor Felix Camacho, seeking the Guam Supreme Court's interpretation of the debt limitation provision in the Organic Act. During my work on that case, I developed a better understanding of real property tax assessments and the role of the Board of Equalization in that process. I learned that the board has two major responsibilities: to ensure that the real property tax role is available for public inspection every year, and to review taxpayer applications for adjustments to their property tax assessments. I intend to approach my work with the board the same way I approach my legal work: diligently, ethically, and deliberatively. I will put in the time and effort to get the job done efficiently and expeditiously. I will always be mindful of my ethical obligations as a lawyer and as a public servant, and I will be guided by applicable laws and regulations when considering matters that come before the board. My practice over the last 20 years has focused mainly on transactional and government work. I have assisted private clients with corporate governance issues, acquisitions, and real estate transactions. I have assisted government clients with local and federal regulatory compliance matters, procurement issues, and bond financings. I believe that my work with both private and government clients provides me with a unique background that will allow me to contribute in a meaningful and substantive way to the board. I would like to end by thanking Governor Leon Guerrero and Lieutenant Governor Tenorio for putting their trust in me to serve on the Guam Board of Equalization. Thank you again for allowing me to provide this testimony, and I ask for your support of my appointment so I may have the opportunity to provide this important public service. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Damian, and thank you for accepting this nomination amidst your busy lifestyle. So just a couple of questions regarding serving. I know that you're committed to being at the meetings and being at any hearing possibly, considering your family, you have your family to attend to, as well as your professional life. Just one thing about, a question that's always asked is, do you have any conflict of interest? And how do you determine whether a conflict of interest exists?
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that question. So when I did first get appointed internally within our law firm, I did run a conflict check just to make sure that we don't have any pending matters before the Board of Equalization that I would need to disclose or request, and that came out clear. But I think that the board, the conflict issues would arise with board members when we review applications, and as I do with my legal work, whenever I get a new assignment, the first thing we do is assess whether a conflict exists. Look at the conflict rules, and I would do the same thing here. There's rules governing board members when situations require their recusal, so I would look at those rules and I would assess whether a particular matter requires my recusal, whether it be because the applicant is a client or a family member, then at that point I would recuse myself.
Okay, great. I think that's all my questions. So I would like to yield to my colleagues for any questions. Senator Shelton, do you have any questions for the nominee?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. You asked one of my questions as well, and I was glad, Mrs. Damian, that you addressed the issue about time and the commitment to the board, knowing that it will be time-consuming and a very important role you will play, and I'm glad to hear your commitment and dedication that you're pledging here today. I'm thankful that you have answered this call to service, and obviously, you're very qualified and seem experienced with the board and the role of the board, and so I look forward to your service on the board. So, this is Massey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Kelly Marsh Titino.
This is Massey, Madam Chair. Yes, so it was very good to hear the testimony of the chair and colleague, and of course, they both said the highest of comments, which is very reassuring. It's very important to us to be able to hear about the integrity, the dedication, the experience, and then from the candidate herself, it was important testimony to hear, so we appreciate that very much, and as has been mentioned, it's important to hear that you've taken that time to assess the time commitments and some of the other commitments that are involved, or some of the other possible conflicts of interest that might be involved in. So everything that I've heard thus far is very reassuring. It's exactly the type of information that we're looking for, and with all of that, along with the others, thank you for accepting the nomination. I think we're very fortunate that it has worked out, that you will be able to have the time commitment and be able to apply your expertise. I did notice in your application that you've served as a member of several boards in the past, and so that gives you that real understanding of what kind of commitments are expected. So again, I thank you for accepting the nomination, and I look forward to your nomination going through.
Thank you, Senator. All right, thank you, Senator Marsh. Senator Telo Taitegui.
This is Massey, Madam Chair. And hi, Janalyn.
Hi.
I'm happy to see you. When I heard it was your name, as you know, I know your family very well, your husband's side of the family is related, so for the record. And of course, there's no doubt in my mind that you can do an excellent job at this board. Having Kubey and Michael here, I have total respect for these two individuals, and when they gave their endorsement to be here today on your behalf, I knew for sure that my yes vote for you is true to form. And if there's anything, again, thank you for stepping up. I know you're very busy, but like I said, I know your family, and the most important thing is having that family support to allow you to serve the people of Guam, and I know you have that behind you because you have a lot on your plate, but it's good to have family support. So I wish you the very best, and once again, thank you so much for stepping up to the plate, and if there's anything at all I could do to help you, I know that you guys do some, not conflicts, but appeals, certain appeals, or even things to help the board out in any way that we can. My door is always open. Funding could always be something too, I know boards usually need, so my door is open to you, and good luck to you. You have my vote.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Senator Taitegui. Senator Torres?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to express my appreciation to you, Janalyn, for accepting this nomination and also for expressing your knowledge of the importance of this board. I think that is the best foundation, but over the years, you certainly have gained my respect and admiration, not only as a member of the Guam Bar all these years, but also in my experience working with you when you were legal counsel to the airport and I was the executive manager. So you certainly are very well-qualified, and we're very fortunate that you've accepted this nomination, so you have my full support.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Torres. So I think that concludes the questions from my colleagues and also as well as the testimony. So again, I would like to thank you, Ms. Damian, for accepting this nomination. I think the board really welcomes you in this role, considering they need the support from somebody who is well-versed in both the public and private sector, and especially dealing with land issues. So thank you so much, and I appreciate you taking the time, and especially your commitment for the next four years, I believe.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, great. So this concludes this part of the agenda. So we can, if you feel free to leave at this point, for those that are here for Janalyn's testimony. This is Massey.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we are going to move on to the next part of the agenda, which is receiving testimony regards to Bill Number 283-35COR. It's sponsored by myself, Sabina Flores Perez. Again, it's an act to repeal and reenact Chapter 53 of Division 2, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to updating the Guam Safe Drinking Water Act, to repeal Chapter 53A of Division 2, Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, relative to the Guam Lead Ban Act, and to repeal and reenact Chapter 6 of Division 2, Title 22 Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations, relative to updating the Guam Safe Drinking Water Regulations. So I'd like to give some brief opening statements before we move into another extension of opening statements with Guam PA and followed by testimony. So Bill 283-35, also known as the Guam Safe Drinking Water Act, is a comprehensive overhaul of local regulations protecting Guam's drinking water. It was developed in close collaboration with Guam PA. This measure closes regulatory gaps, it updates and incorporates the Guam Lead Ban Act, and ultimately allows Guam PA to regain the ability to directly cite violators. As our island faces a global pandemic, it's essential that we continue the important work of this body, especially ensuring that our public water system continues to provide safe drinking water, with the added challenge of addressing a novel virus, COVID-19. As it stands, our local drinking water regulations are decades out of date. Safe drinking water laws in Guam Code Annotated have not been updated since 1977, and the respective rules and regulations were last updated in 2005. In the intervening years, while federal regulations have undergone significant overhauls to protect the public and environment, Guam's laws have lagged far behind. Are necessary in order to support Guam's upcoming application to the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency for Primacy, meaning the primary authority to enforce the U.S. Safe Drinking Water Act. Over the past two decades, revisions to the U.S. Safe Drinking Water Act and associated regulations have resulted in Guam losing its primacy over several key rules, including those which control microbiological quality of drinking water, in both surface and groundwater, as well as chemical contaminants, including disinfection byproducts. These rules are the primary regulations that protect the public against chemical toxins in drinking water and the transmission of waterborne disease. So while Guam currently monitors all public water systems to ensure compliance with the most recent federal rules, ultimate enforcement authority currently rests with the federal government. These revisions will allow Guam to regain primacy and restore the full enforcement authority to the territory. Some of the significant proposed revisions include: it incorporates completely the Guam Lead Ban Act into the Guam Safe Drinking Water Act. It requires the development of criteria for sanitary surveys of public water systems. It authorizes Guam PA to develop regulations, but none are formed at this time, but it authorizes Guam PA to develop regulations for bottled water companies, water vending machines, water hauling, and rainwater catchments. It also authorizes Guam PA to create regulations concerning governing the design, construction, and substantial alteration of a public water system, ensure the public safety of public water systems. A very important feature is it requires regulations regarding the ban on the sale of lead pipe, plumbing fixtures, and fittings. New provisions allow for regulations to include the following: alternative methods approving compliance with lead-free provisions, certification of persons who conduct sampling to ensure compliance, and the ability to require the removal of new or existing pipe, plumbing fittings, or fixtures, solder, or flux to comply with lead-free requirements. It also authorizes Guam PA to confiscate, destroy, or order the destruction or return shipment of product supplies or materials that do not conform to lead-free requirements. It authorizes Guam PA to establish an interim action level for a contaminant that U.S. EPA has not established a maximum contaminant level for, if the contaminant presents an unacceptable health risk to the public. It also authorizes Guam PA to certify third-party water samplers for determining compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act. So there's several things that this changes that have been made. So in addition to that, it changes to notices, requirements for public water systems. It requires consumer confidence reports as prescribed by regulations. It changes penalties, so there's an increase of the maximum penalty from $5,000 per day of violation to $32,000 per day of violation, amongst other things. So there are many different changes that have come into play, and I would like to invite Guam PA to further flesh out some of these details, and I believe they have a presentation to present to us at this time. So I would like to let Brian Bearden, who took the lead of the overhaul of the Guam Safe Drinking Water Act. So, Mr. Bearden, would you like to start?
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Just a quick introduction of myself to people who don't know who I am and why I'm wearing a uniform. I am a commander in the United States Public Health Service. That's not a military service, that's under the Department of Health and Human Services. We are the relatively less-known uniformed service that answers to the Surgeon General. So maybe this uniform has become a little bit more visible recently with the COVID response, maybe not. I am currently assigned to Guam PA on a detailed agreement with the United States EPA, and serving as the head of the Water Division and the chief engineer. And although I was the lead in getting these regulations and statute put together, most of the work was done by all of our staff here at Guam PA, who took on a tremendous workload to get it done. I believe we have some slides, and I believe the senator has already covered a fair amount of it, so I will go over it, and if anyone needs me to just cut it short, let me know. Could we get the slides on the screen?
Excuse me, Brian. While we're setting that up, I would like to recognize the presence of Vice Speaker Selena Nelson. Thank you, Vice Speaker, for joining us here today.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Could we go to the first slide? So I just want to spend a very brief amount of time on some background information to help everybody understand why we're doing this. The drinking water regulations are really the oldest of the regulations and laws that the United States The drinking water regulations are really the oldest of the regulations and laws that the United States Environmental Protection Agency administers. They go back all the way to the early twentieth century and were originally promulgated by by my agency, the U S Public Health Service. You see a photo of the Fourth Surgeon General, the United States there. Next slide, please. This all became part of the U S E P A in the nineteen seventies, and the U S E P A was formed out of several components of the U S Public Health Service. So I want to talk about the concept of primacy, and primacy is a word that basically means the primary authority for a state or territory to enforce the Safe Drinking Water Act. The Safe Drinking Water Act is a federal law. It applies to all states and territories and is implemented by the federal government, unless the federal government grants primacy to a state or territory. Currently, just about every state in the United States and territory has primacy for most of the Safe Drinking Water Act. The lone exception to that is Wyoming, which chose to let the federal government run that program. Guam had primacy for a few of the rules, a few of the most important rules for a while. But unfortunately, some of the changes that have occurred over the past decade and a half or so have resulted in us losing primacy for some of the more important rules you see there, like the groundwater rule and the total coliform rule, and some additional new rules that have been developed in the interim. Actually, the groundwater rule is a newer rule that came out after our last regulation revision and as well as the disinfection byproduct rule and some of the updates to the surface water treatment rule. And as the Senator already discussed, these are the primary rules that govern the microbiological quality of our drinking water, whether it comes from groundwater or surface water, and are really the core component of what we do on a daily basis in making sure our public water systems adhere to the Safe Drinking Water Act. Next slide, please. So a few things that a state or territory needs in order to gain primacy from the federal government. Number one, it needs to meet certain requirements in terms of the enforcement authorities. Our current Guam statute, which, as Senator Perez mentioned, has not been changed since the late nineteen seventies, it does not meet all the current federal requirements for what enforcement ability a state or territory must have. Secondly, we need to adopt the most recent set of regulations, or at least create our own regulations that are no less stringent than the current set of regulations by the federal government. The regulations that are included with this package do adopt the most recent version of the federal regulations. And finally, the state needs to prepare what the federal government calls implementation procedures as part of an application to the federal government to to gain primacy. This is something that Guam E P A has already been working on with contractors from U S E P A, with our own staff, and with technical assistance directly from the U S E P A Region nine. So everything is in place right now to start moving forward with primacy, once we can get the statute and regulations updated. Next slide, please. So another quick thing that I need to explain to make sure that everybody understands what these regulations apply to is the concept of what is a public water system. Virtually all of the rules that we're talking about today apply to public water systems, with the exception of the lead-free requirements, which we'll talk about in some detail. The definition of a public water system is a fairly complicated matter that's been defined by a number of cases over the years, but in simple terms, in general, it just means the provision of water for human consumption through a system such as pipes that serves at least twenty five people, and it does not mean an individual home, even if that individual home had its own water source, such as a well or a rainwater catchment. One thing that makes it easier to understand what a public water system is, is to describe what some of them are. In Guam, we have ten public water systems, and that is the three Guam Waterworks Authority systems. And the three, by that I mean, are the North, Central, and South systems, which are split up somewhat administratively. They all are interconnected to some extent. Guam International Airport, the U S Navy, and the U S Air Force. Those are the largest kind of utility-scale public water systems. And in addition to that, we have a few smaller resort-sized systems like Coco's Island, for example, and one hospital. Next, please. So the statute revision, as already described by the Senator, is a it combines the original Guam Safe Drinking Water Act with the Guam Lead Ban Act, which came along later in the nineteen nineties, and pulls out the implementation provisions from that statute and puts them into the regulations where they'll be easier to update in the future. Next slide. So one of the things that the Senator already mentioned that is in the new statute is this new concept of interim action levels. And this was put into our statute to address the issue of emerging contaminants. The most common example of that that we're all aware of in Guam right now that has made a lot of press is the per and polyfluorinated alcohol substances or PFAS, such as PFOS and PFOA. We started with the Hawaii law as a model for how to establish an interim action level. And we added some additional public processes, since the Guam E P A has a board of directors, Hawaii does not, which would allow that process to go through there. The way that process would work is once Guam E P A identifies a chemical contaminant, an emerging contaminant, that poses what we believe to be is an unacceptable risk to public health, we would propose what our interim action level would be. We would publish a risk assessment and make that available for public review. A risk assessment, it would be something similar to, and actually would be a document usually prepared by another outside agency, such as the U S E P A, that describes the the health effects of the chemical, the risks of exposure, and sets a level above which that chemical is considered to be unsafe in drinking water. Again, the example of PFOS and PFOA, the E P A Health Assessment Level Document, which is truly a risk assessment, would be something, for example, that we might cite and publish as our basis for a an interim interim action level. The proposed law would require a public notice and for a public hearing to be published at least twice over about a three-week minimum period. And then comments that would there are received from the public during that time would need to be considered by Guam E P A. And then a final decision made by the Guam E P A Board and a vote in a public meeting after consideration of all of that process. Next slide, please. The enforcement provisions that have been updated, as the Senator has already introduced. The old Safe Drinking Water Act had viol had penalties, civil penalties of five thousand dollars per violation per day. The Lead Ban Act, which was passed later in the nineteen nineties, included penalties of twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars per violation per day. The new act is proposing a total penalty of up to thirty two thousand dollars per violation per day for both, for everything under that under the two statutes that are combined now. And we want to make sure that we point out that that's an up to amount. Guam E P A, for all of its environmental laws and regulations that it uses, works on a graduated scale in terms of how we assess penalties. We establish a a penalty matrix with which looks at issues such as the severity of the violation, the severity impacts, how the culpability of the person causing the the violation to occur, and bases the penalty on that. So the highest penalty would be reserved for the most extreme cases. And we do want to note that you know, since this is a very important public health safeguard for the public of Guam, we do believe that a severe penalty should be assessed for situations where mismanagement of a water system results in illness or death. The new enforcement provisions also add the the ability to sue for penalties and damages, and this is a requirement under our primacy rules that we will need to meet in order to gain primacy. And it also adds criminal penalties, which were not in there before, I believe. Next slide, please. The new statute also proposes a number of fees, but the only fee that's established at this time is the fee for lead ban inspection and sampling. The other fees, we are only proposing the authority to allow Guam E P A to establish those fees, but we're not enacting any fees at this time. Those would be something that we would pursue at a later date. And we just want to add that, you know, again, this is a very important public health program that has to be funded. We do receive some federal funds to pay for this program, but they are not enough to even fund a single staffing position. So we need the ability to run our program and and fund it. But when the time comes for us to establish those fees, we will follow the full rulemaking process. It will be public. It will involve the full requirements in terms of the economic assessments. The lead ban fee, we are proposing a slight increase at present. Under the nineteen ninety nine Guam Lead Ban Act, it allows for Guam E P A to charge for the hourly rate of the person conducting the sampling plus ten percent. We elected to go with a fixed cost so that people aren't guessing what that fee might be, and we increased that slightly slightly to thirty five dollars an hour to cover our anticipated costs of running that program. We do, however, anticipate that the total cost associated with the Guam Lead Ban requirements will drop because we are now allowing some other alternatives to sampling, which I will describe in a few slides. Next slide, please. So as the Senator already mentioned, the statute authorizes Guam E P A to create some new regulations that are not part of the federal regulations that we're adopting for bottled water companies and water vending machines. And I want to pay pay some attention to those two right now. These are two that we've discussed, that Guam E P A has discussed with the Guam Department of Public Health and Social Services, which regulates those two items to some extent. But between the two agencies, we've identified a few gaps where people who consume water from those two sources are not provided the same level of protection that people who would consume water out of a tap are. And we want to make sure that we close those gaps. But again, that's something we'll propose at a later date through a fully public process. The regulations also cover or authorize us to write regulations in the future that would cover water hauler or tanker trucks, rainwater catchment systems as a part of public water systems only. We are not proposing to regulate individual home rainwater catchments. And also to write regulations governing the safety and security of public water systems, which is not covered, believe it or not, by the federal regulations. There are some federal laws that cover that, but there are no local Guam or federal Guam or federal regulations that cover safety and security. Next, so next slide, please. So as I mentioned, we're moving the Lead Ban Act into the main Safe Drinking Water Act statute and taking the implementation of the regulations out and putting that into the the regulation section. That includes the building permitting and building occupancy requirements. Those will be moved into the regulations, which I'll describe in a minute or two here. The biggest change, I believe, that that the especially the development community will notice and the the average consumer who wants to buy a new faucet is that we're no longer requiring only water sampling to prove that a faucet is lead-free. We're also going to recognize for the first time in Guam, the third-party certification of faucets. That's the the packaging you'll see in the products that are marketed to the U S, where they've been certified by a third party. Typically, this is done through destructive testing to really prove that it meets the requirements of lead-free. A water sample does not do that. A water sample using the numbers that we use is meant for a different purpose, to measure the corrosivity of water. But to truly prove that something is lead-free requires a very complex test, and the only way to prove that is through the certification processes. It also adds the ability for Guam E P A to confiscate, destroy, or order the destruction or return shipment of anything that we are find in a hardware store or other retailer or wholesaler that does not conform to the lead-free requirements. The current law is is silent on what we can do. Once we do discover that, it only prohibits it. Next slide, please. Talk about the regulations next. It will not take me very long. And the reason for that is because we elected to try to keep this as simple as possible because we want to focus on regaining primacy for Guam. So the regulations right now are limited to just adopting the most current federal regulations and implementing the Lead Ban Act requirements so that we do not lose that when we combine the two laws. As mentioned already, the Guam-specific regulations will be proposed at a later date sometime within the next year or so, as our plan. And we want to point out that if we do not adopt these regulations at the same time as the revised statute, that we will lose the ability to enforce our drinking water rule. So it's very critical that the regulations stay with the statute as this moves forward. Next slide. So our regulations, we started with a very simple overhaul of the last version of Guam's regulations, which were issued in two thousand and five under public law twenty eight dash eighty six, I believe. And those regulations were very different from previous Guam drinking water regulations in that they did they did not try to duplicate the federal regulations. They just simply adopted them by reference, which makes primacy application a much simpler process, because all the federal government has to do is just make sure that you adopted the sections that they need. This is a a method that most other states have gone to in the last decade or so, and Guam is no different. So as I mentioned, the primary revisions to these previous Guam regulations are just to change that the date of the last edition of the CFR that was adopted, which was in two thousand and three, to the two thousand and nineteen edition, which includes all the new and updated federal rules that we need to to go after primacy again. We've also renumbered the sections to more closely match the code of federal regulations so that it's easier to comply with her consultants and utility experts that have been used to working with the federal rules. And as I mentioned, it adopts the Lead Ban Act implementation provisions. Next, please. I've already mentioned this, but some of the the new or the significantly updated federal rules that have been added compared to the two thousand and three edition include the groundwater rule, which is a is it is a microbiological rule for groundwater quality that mostly makes sure that any water supplied by groundwater by wells such as G W A's Northern System is treated properly to kill off viruses, which is even more important nowadays. The revised total coliform rule is just the latest version of that original nineteen fourteen drinking water rule that was established by the federal government. It gets improved and and adjusted every decade or so, and this is the most recent one. And then we have there the enhanced treatment for cryptosporidium. That is a new addition to the surface water treatment rules. It was not included in Guam's prior rules. And then the last two there, the stage-two disinfection byproducts requirements and the initial distribution system evaluations. Those are both aimed at preventing what are called disinfection byproducts, which is where if you do not use disinfection chemicals such as chlorine in a proper way, you can end up creating toxic chemicals, carcinogens, actually. And if you use it properly, though, you don't do that. And these rules are designed to make sure that that happens, that public water systems are using that, their disinfection chemicals responsibly. Next, please. We wanted to point out with these regulations, especially for this hearing, that even though we're calling these new federal regulations, they already apply in Guam. These are not new. Guam Waterworks, the Navy, the Air Force, everybody has to comply with these right now. So this does not create any new burden or cost for public water systems. The difference is, is that it will allow Guam to administer these rules instead of relying on the federal government to do it for us. It push comes to shove. And it gives us that ability by having it in our own regulations. Next, please. Just a little bit more detail on the Guam Lead Ban Act implementation, just for anyone who is interested in how this changes, especially with the construction and occupancy process. We've adopted the latest federal definition of lead-free, which was changed in two thousand and eleven. As I mentioned also, we will recognize all of the latest third-party lead-free certification standards. They're all listed in the regulations. The building permit requirements are now very clear. They explicitly specify what must be in the construction plans, and basically it's just notes that require the contractor to comply with these and install plumbing products that meet these requirements. It also streamlines the occupancy permits. As I mentioned before, currently, every occupancy permit permit requires a water sample to be taken from each faucet after it sits for a certain amount of time to allow lead to leach out. I mentioned before, that's not the method by which you determine lead-free. It's a method that's used for the the Lead and Copper Act, a totally different rule that's designed to make sure that the water provided by the utility is not so corrosive that it leaches lead or copper out of existing pipes and and faucets. The method for testing new faucets is that third-party certification that we mentioned. And that's what we want to focus on for this. So the way the new regulations are written is that if we can, if the contractor or the permitee can prove that every single component that they use in their plumbing system meets the lead-free requirements, then we will not require a sample to be taken. If they cannot prove that, we'll still take a sample. But one thing it also makes clear is that taking a sample is not an excuse or a way to get around the lead-free requirement. One of the practices happening now is that people are bringing in products that are not certified from other countries and using the sampling as an excuse to bring those in. We want to make sure that that's not happening anymore, because that does not protect the public. And finally, as I mentioned already, the inspection and fee changes. So next slide, please. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Senator. That was a that was an excellent presentation. So yeah, for now. So yeah, for now, I would like to actually allow those that have come here to testify regarding the bill. And then if we want to have questions, let's see, it's about three o'clock, almost three o'clock. Yeah, we'll reserve questions for later if we have time. So I believe, so Guam EPA is here to provide testimony in addition to the presentation. So I would like to welcome, I'm not sure which of the Guam EPA, I believe it's Michelle, Michelle Lastimoza. Okay, she's going to provide testimony.
All right, good afternoon, and thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Vice Speaker Nelson, Senator Marsh Titino, Senator Torres, Senator Shelton, and Senator Tai Tegui. Guam EPA appreciates the opportunity to present its testimony. I will be reading Mr. Leon Guerrero's, our Guam EPA administrators' testimony submitted to your committee. The Guam Environmental Protection Agency is in full support of Bill two eighty-three dash thirty-five. The Guam Safe Drinking Water Act, ten GCA Chapter fifty-three, was enacted by Public Law fourteen dash ninety in nineteen seventy-seven and has never been amended. The Guam Lead Ban Act, ten GCA Chapter fifty-three A, was added by Public Law twenty-five dash fifty-one in nineteen ninety-nine. The proposed amendments to the Guam Safe Drinking Water Act will modernize the law, close regulatory gaps, and allow Guam to regain primacy over the regulation of safe drinking water on the island. The proposed revisions are necessary in order to support Guam's upcoming applications to the US Environmental Protection Agency for primacy, meaning the primary authority to enforce the US Safe Drinking Water Act, also known by its acronym SW, SDWA. Over the past two decades, revisions to the US SDWA and its associated regulations have resulted in Guam not having primacy over several key rules, including those which control the microbiological quality of drinking water in both surface water and groundwater, as well as chemical contaminants, including disinfection byproducts. These rules are the primary regulations that protect the public against chemical toxins in drinking water and the transmission of waterborne disease. All provisions of the federal SDWA are currently in effect and monitored by Guam EPA, and the proposed revisions will not pose any additional burden to Guam's public water systems. The proposed revisions simply enable the return of the ability to enforce these rules to the territorial government and to ensure that Guam continues to receive funding for both safe drinking water regulatory programs and infrastructure. In addition to the proposed revisions to the Guam Safe Drinking Water Act and Lead, Guam Lead Ban Act, are proposed revisions to the Safe Drinking Water Regulations to bring them in line with the federal drinking water regulations. As with most, as with the most recent update to the Guam Safe Drinking Water Regulations to through Public Law twenty-six dash eighty-six in two thousand and five, the proposed amendments to the regulations would adopt most of the current federal safe drinking water regulations by reference, except where language specific to Guam is necessary. The proposed revised regulations would be no less stringent than the federal regulations as required for primary enforcement ability over the Safe Drinking Water Program. The changes to the implementation of the Guam Lead Ban Act have been designed to both match current federal law and to ease requirements on consumers. Currently, all new construction in Guam must collect water samples from all kitchen and lavatory faucets to be tested for the presence of lead. This is problematic in two ways. One, the test is extremely easy to fake. And two, a simple water sample is not enough to determine compliance with the latest lead-free rules. This can only be done through destructive testing of every component and material used in the manufacturing of the faucet, pipe fixture, and solder. The third-party certification provided by all plumbing components manufactured for sale in the US market is considered adequate proof by the US EPA. And the proposed changes in Guam's final, Guam's rule finally recognizes such certification. These changes will provide greater safety to consumers and simplify the speed and speed occupancy permit process while also reducing costs. It is very important to note that the regulations must be updated at the same time as the statutory amendments to avoid any lapse in the ability to enforce the safe drinking water provisions that will occur in the transition from the old law to the new law and to allow Guam's primacy application to proceed. In order to expedite Guam's application, the regulations being proposed for adoption alongside the revised statute are limited to the adoption of the federal regulations required to support primacy and the implementation of Guam's revised Lead Ban Act provisions. Additional regulations to implement new Guam-specific provisions of the revised Guam Safe Drinking Water Act will be proposed at a later date. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with all of you today, and that's signed by Walter S. Leon Guerrero.
Thank you, Assistant Administrator Michelle Lastimoza. So next on the list to testify is Julie Mendoza from Guam EPA as well.
Hi, and I'm here. Hello, Senators. My name is Juliette Mendoza, and I am the environmental health specialist with the drinking water program at Guam Environmental Protection Agency. I am here today in support of Bill two eighty-three dash thirty-five. So the Guam Safe Water Act Regulation needs updating to include, to include at least revisions to the primacy requirement by US EPA. And as a regulator for the Guam Water Program, there are challenges that I face each day. It is difficult to implement and enforce these rules if Guam EPA doesn't have the primacy and/or the authority to ensure the Guam Public Water System meets the standard that are at least as stringent as the national standards. So I'm here today to, in support of this bill. Michelle and Brian had mentioned all of what we expect or what we work so hard for. And I thank you very much for this opportunity to give my testimony in support of Bill twenty-three dash thirty-five.
Thank you so much, Julie. I do remember, I think it was over a year when I first, when we first talked about how you were preparing for this moment. So I know it took a lot of work to get this done. So thank you for all your efforts and together with Brian and everybody at Guam EPA. And thank you for being here.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
I would like to also recognize Senator Munia, my apologies. You came in on early earlier, and I just want to make sure that I catch you at this time. So thank you for being here, Senator Munia. So next on our list to present testimony is Nick Ruplee. Welcome back, Nick. You're back at Guam EPA. That's nice to see that you're back there. I know you had several stints over at Office of Homeland Security. So it's glad to see you back.
Hi, Senator, thank you. I'm still here at Guam Homeland Security and the Joint Information Center. But I wasn't prepared to speak. I think Brian and our Deputy Administrator and then Julie said everything that needs to be said about your support for this bill. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for being here. So I believe we have Dr. Jensen from Weary. So welcome, Weary. And so if you would like to present testimony, and if you can come closer to the, yeah, I appreciate that. Kind of silhouette it. So if you can unmute yourself, I don't know if you're speaking at this time. Okay, good. And if, I think you're kind of coming in on dark. So if there's a light, if there's a light that can shine from the front, we could see your face.
Sorry about the technical difficulties. Yeah, we're all supportive of this. Conversations with Mr. Bearden. Our laboratory has been involved with testimony for years. We've followed this, been consulted and involved in getting the technical aspects of it. And we're totally in support.
Great, that's, that's great to hear. It's always great to hear that there's collaboration. Great, any further comments, Dr. Jensen? Okay, great. Just for the record, we also invited GWA to present testimony. They sent their testimony prior to the public hearing, and so we'll be sharing that with the committee as well. I believe they have some recommendations that I'll share with Guam, to share with Guam EPA. We also did reach out to all the other public water systems, also the smaller ones that you'd mentioned, smaller ones that you alluded to earlier, Mr. Bearden. So I believe we've exhausted all those that have come to testify for the bill, but I would like to open up to questions from my colleagues. So I'll start with the Vice Speaker Nelson, if you have any questions for the panel today.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you, especially Guam EPA, for the enormous amount of work that you have done in updating this statute. I met Senator Perez about three years ago, and one of her passions was fixing and protecting and preserving our water systems. And so, you know, this is a great movement forward. It is very true, Ms. Lastimoza, what you said in your, in your testimony, that there's more to it than just going there and, you know, having someone test the water coming out from your faucet or your pipes. It's all-inclusive, and I've seen it where we have independent contractors or, or just people trying to sell stuff to, to our residents here on island. And so they just have like this litmus test, but there's more to testing for lead in our water. So thank you for that. And thank you, Brian, for your education on this topic, for educating us. It was a very thorough PowerPoint. Nick, I can tell you're still at home then. I can see the banner in the back, so hang in there. And thank you, Dr. Jensen, for, you know, your support and collaboration on this effort. The one question I have, Madam Chair, is really to ensure that we move this statute forward. And it's, you know, there's actual revenue for it to be realized and implemented. And in the, in the fiscal notes of the committee report, in the fiscal note attached to the bill, BBMR stated that, that fees may need to increase because of, as a, as a requirement to sustain this act. And I know that even Brian, the commander, also has noted that fees would have to be sustained locally. There is still a federal funding, but we need to put more emphasis on this. And so just to understand the staffing pattern, the needs to implement so that we can move this statute forward and hopefully pass it into law.
Okay, so I believe that question is to me or to somebody at Guam EPA? Just in general?
Either or, if anyone can answer that.
Okay, I believe, Brian, you had mentioned something earlier about how federal laws still apply and that, that our local water utility is complying with that. So if you can speak to that, if you can answer that question.
Sure, I think the question was about fees and how we'll bring in more revenue? Or is it more about the fiscal impact to the water utilities?
Right, so the fees that will need to be realized to maintain and sustain this, the act that we are looking to.
Oh, sure. Yes, absolutely. We would have loved to have established those right now, but we're just not ready. And that's something we intend to do. I know that's my number-one charge from our administrator, Walter Leon Guerrero, is to work on regulations to establish fees. And we want to try to get that done later, the last half of this year, which we're moving into very quickly here. The reduction in revenue that we anticipate in terms of less sampling and inspection because of the Lead Ban Act, our comment to BBMR at the time was that we only began to collect that fee last year anyway. For whatever reason, it had never been collected, even though it was in the statute. So we only made about ten thousand dollars on that last year, I believe, was the amount. And so even though we might be collecting less this year, it's not going to make that much of a difference. And we're hoping that the new fees that we're able to establish later would be, you know, much larger so that we're able to actually run the program on it. Does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for your great work.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Kelly Marsh, would you like to share any questions with the panel here?
Mrs. Lastimoza, Madam Chair. And yes, it was very good to hear because we do want to make sure that we're understanding the fiscal impacts and taking those into consideration. And I do want to commend the author of this bill and everybody here. So thank you so much for being here, but, but not just here and now, as has been mentioned. I know this has taken a lot of time, a lot of thought, a lot of preparation, a lot of diligence on your part for the benefit of us all. Because really, that's what it comes down to, is trying to update and modernize our Safe Drinking Water Act so that we're all going to benefit health-wise and otherwise. So I really appreciate that. And, and I too, like the Vice Speaker, I know that that is one of the early passions of this author and that it's been something she's been committed to for a very long time. So I'm really appreciative of the fact that she's seen it through and she's helped making a difference along with everybody else here. To hear that US EPA, Guam EPA, Weary, GWA, that you've all been working together collaboratively in one way or another, you've been providing suggestions or reviewing. That's really important for us to hear because we want all of you to be involved so that not only we're working together, but we're understanding it. For someone like myself, this is not an area I have a lot of experience with. And so to be able to hear across the board from our different entities in support of this bill is very, very important. So I appreciate hearing that that has taken place and that we'll be getting some suggestions that will be further reviewed and vetted for us to be considering as well. So one of the questions that I have is, as you likely know, for a variety of reasons, people, what, people wonder at times about our government's ability to, to regulate as is needed. And so I want to help be creating that confidence in our expertise. I think many of us, like myself and the other senators who are here, we see the expertise. We see the hard work that goes on for our community, but not everybody gets to see that on a daily basis. So there have been some questions about if we're more independent in a sense, having that primary ability to, to carry out and enforce these regulations. Do we see any issues with us being able to carry that out from your experience with these agencies and organizations over the years? Are there any concerns on your part? Or what can we do to assure the public that this is something we can do? We have the expertise and maybe even walk us through how some of that might work? So I'll defer to the author as to who might be the best to answer that. Maybe that would be Guam EPA?
Yes, perhaps Michelle Lastimoza, would you like to comment? Or perhaps Nick Ruplee too, as well? Brian?
Certainly, thank you so much. I know that Brian and Julie have worked tremendously on this effort. I know that, like with any other program, you know, staffing, the expertise is always going to be. I know that, like with any other program, you know, staffing, the expertise is always going to be variable in that there's a shortage of specialists in the field, just island-wide, right? So certainly more support is, could definitely be used in terms of providing funding, support, increasing our staff to be able to do the jobs that we need to do. So certainly there are challenges, but I have every confidence in the staff that we do have to be able to carry out the regulations and the statute that's being put forth. Brian, do you have anything to add? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Cindy.
Yes, I'd just like to add that, as Michelle said, it's really dependent on staffing. We, two years ago, when I came in here, well, less than two years ago, we had five staff in the drinking water program. We're down to just three now, and our funding has dropped, I believe, compared to previous years. So it was really important for us to get that funding so that we can begin to replace these staff. And at the time that we had those five staff, we had a document in need for more even than that. So that, like I said, that's one of the main priorities that I've been given by the administrators, to try to find ways to make our program self-supporting, so we're not relying on federal grant money, which, as I mentioned, is fairly inadequate for the drinking water program to begin with. So that's definitely something that we want to do, is a vision that I know I share with Michelle and Walter. So, you know, that's what I can assure you, is that we were trying to grow and build that technical capacity. And that's part of the reason I'm here, is to help build that capacity so that in the future Guam EPA can run with this on their own.
Sisus Massey for those answers. Again, in our roles, those are so important to hear. We need to hear that there's the assurance from the agency itself and the insurance for, from Mr. Bearden representing US EPA is also important, because we are seeing, perhaps if this bill goes through, we're seeing some change in being less reliant on the federal government. And it sounds like there are some very positive parts to this, that it's less efficient to rely on the federal government and it's more time-consuming and things like that. Whereas here, we can perhaps have, from my understanding, it's the longest bill I've ever seen, so I'm still working my way through it. It's 126 pages, for those of you who haven't seen it yet. And so it is, it's very thoughtful, it's very thorough. But with that, yeah, the assurance that we're on the right track is very important and that we have that. And it's so important for us to hear that as we're thinking about rightsizing the government, which is often talked about, we have to remember there are parts of our government where the funding has been less, the staffing has been less. And so for the health and benefit and well-being of our entire community, there are places where we really need to bolster it and stand it up. And so it is, like I said, important for us to hear that. Did I need to wait for the second round for another question?
No. Yeah, you can exhaust your questions.
Okay, great. So the other question that I have is, and maybe it's unnecessary, but it'd be good to hear if it is indeed unnecessary. Do we lose the ability to go to the federal government for some issues? So right now, if there are issues or non-compliance, we send it to the federal government. And I'm not sure if there would be instances where it would be useful to send something to the federal government, but do we still have that ability? Or do you see that as it's a non-issue, that we don't need to continue having that ability to have some reliance on our connection to the federal government for enforcing these regulations?
I'll try to answer that. So primacy gives us the primary enforcement authority. The federal government is still involved, so there will still be close oversight from the federal government over the program that we have. But it does put all of that responsibility onto Guam. So I've seen this happen. I worked in CNMI for 20 years, and we had a criminal case in CNMI that was tried by the federal government for some laboratory fraud. And it ultimately got overturned because it was tried in federal court, and the lawyers for the defendant successfully argued that because CNMI had primacy, that it could not have been tried in federal court. So it does, we do know that it does put that responsibility onto Guam for any kind of enforcement. But the US EPA doesn't disappear. They're always there with technical assistance and with oversight to make sure that things are going correctly. But it does put a lot more of that responsibility onto the state and removes a little bit of that ability to go to the EPA if we find that we're not getting what we need. We have to do it ourselves. And I speak as "we" as Guam.
Well, and that's very helpful to know. I think it gives us some assurance. You know, some of these tasks, kind of like you're outlining, can be very large ones, and there's a lot that's at stake. I mean, one of the most important things is safe drinking water and safety in our water conditions overall. And so the fact that the US EPA is still part and parcel of this, I think, is very important. My last question that I have at this point is just an understanding, compared to other states and territories, is it very common for us to have stricter regulations? And I guess, in helping me understand this, so thank you for walking me through some of this, is there any issue that comes into play if we do have regulations that end up being stricter than the US federal regulations? And I guess, again, I defer to the author of the bill.
For that, to Brian Bearden?
Yes, ma'am, that's a great question. And I don't believe so. The only requirement on the federal government is that our rules must be at least as stringent. They must be no less stringent than the federal rules. There's a lot of states that do some things that are more stringent. You know, one of the reasons that we do have to follow this up with a second round of regulations is because there's a lot of little things that are not covered in the federal regulations, things like water hauling trucks and the types of materials you can use in a water system and things like that. We have some of that in some older Guam regulations, but we need to update it. And almost every other state has something like that. So there's a lot of freedom for a state to step in and do something that's more stringent, you know, subject, of course, to challenges by, through the state processes. So, you know, it needs to be based on something rational and on good science and must be constitutional, et cetera. But yeah, I think that, does that answer your question, ma'am?
Yes, yes. And I guess if I could just add on to that, because I remember you had come to my office and sat down with Senator Sabina and myself and walked us through some things. And so just hearing about these possibilities, and I guess what goes through my mind a lot of times is, you know, in island environments and our particular situations out here, the dynamics of our community may lend to some other conditions that are maybe not so common, let's say for the state of Wyoming or Nevada or something like that. And so I can see that there would be situations that maybe we would need to look at something differently or look at it more strictly for ourselves. Within the policy that we have here, this bill here, is there anything, just to help us understand, that is stricter than the US federal guidelines at this point or a condition that is perhaps more particular to an island environment like ours?
Sure. So the Lead Ban Act, for example, is a Guam-specific thing that goes well beyond the federal law. You know, most other states, they don't have that ability to go to a hardware store and inspect what's in the hardware store and have it returned to the country of origin. Guam does, and my understanding was that that was passed back in the 1990s because of very Guam-specific conditions. You know, we had products coming in from Asian countries that were not certified for the US market and were found to contain lead above the Lead Ban Act limits. So that's one example. There's not many examples, just because we're only adopting the federal regulations right now with the Lead Ban Act, but some of the parts of the statute that are being proposed would allow for some Guam-specific rules, which are based on conditions out here. For example, the rainwater catchment. You don't run into that in most other parts of the US. Up in the CNMI, for example, it was a big problem. You know, we had, the water utility there was constantly getting bacteria hits, and we ultimately determined that one of the reasons for that were all the individual home rainwater systems that every time they turn off the water, because in a lot of Saipan, they did not at that time have water 24 hours a day. When they turn off the water, those rain tanks would drain back into the water system with all the dead leaves and dead geckos and such, and it would cause all kinds of bacteriological contamination. So in CNMI, they addressed that through a number of ways, and so that's why, one of the reasons we want to propose some rules on that. CNMI addressed, by the way, those individual homes by putting in what they call check valves at every single home. And I know that Guam Water Works is looking at doing that, just to make sure that they keep that dirty water out of the system. There's a couple of examples of things that are more stringent than or different than the federal rules. There could be, there's several others as well, the unregulated contaminant part that we put in there, the interim action levels, that's also something that's not in the federal regulations.
Sisus Massey for explaining that, and I can really see how they make a lot of sense here because of our particular conditions. And I know we're on a tight time schedule, so Sisus Massey, Madam Chair, for allowing me to ask several questions.
Thank you so much, Senator Marsh Taitanu. Senator Talatitigui, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And for my colleagues behind me, I'll try and make it as quick as possible so that I can, they have the opportunity to ask a few questions. I greatly appreciate all the work, Madam Chair, that you've done on this bill. Definitely, it was a lot of work, and there's a lot of information on here. Some of this stuff can get real scientific, so I look forward to asking more questions later on, for the sake of time. I was hoping to see Guam Water Works here, you know, to hear their testimony, but you'll provide it. But in the meantime, you know, my concern too would be the cross-connection and backflow may be an issue that needs to be addressed, as well as the lab certification. So maybe, Brian, you can answer this question. GWA right now has its own certification, lab certification, and I think this legislation might hinder them from the possibility of them actually being able to get certification from the company off-island, who is certified. So would this legislation prohibit Guam Water Works from doing that, from seeking, other than, because their lab right now is certified for the testing, for the Safe Drinking Water Act testing? Can they also go off-island?
Yes, yeah. The new statute just authorizes Guam EPA to write regulations about lab certification. We already performed that anyway. That will not change anything for Guam Water Works. They'll still be able to use off-island laboratories as long as they're certified, the same conditions as we currently have.
Okay, that's good to know. And then, of course, again, looking forward to their questions. You know, the primacy that you were talking about, that we're trying to obtain here for Guam, and I think it's very important as well, but by updating the law and creating this new legislation that would definitely merge the two together, would this actually give us a guarantee that we would obtain the primacy that we're looking for?
Well, you know, there's never any guarantees, right? But we did work closely with US EPA. US EPA reviewed the draft statute. They gave us their blessing on it, said that it meets their requirements as far as they can tell. So now it's really just up to us to put everything together and get it to them and get that primacy. But the most important thing will be if, once this gets established as Guam law and Guam regulation, we can enforce it, whether we have primacy or not, because it's a Guam law. Getting primacy just gives us that additional capability of saying that we're enforcing it on our own. But yeah, we do have pretty good assurance from US EPA that it meets their requirements.
Yeah, and one of the things, my last question, maybe the author of this legislation or the chair would look into other regulations, especially, we're finding out these trucks that are supplying water to the airlines, the airplanes, and we've heard stories about some of this water that's being deposited into. This is actually not very healthy at all. In fact, a lot of contaminants, people are saying, "Don't drink the coffee on the airplane" because they're getting their water through this one delivery truck that's not in compliance. So I'm hoping that we can also look into something like that too, for those protections as well. I don't know if you heard that, Brian, about the airlines and the water?
No, I haven't, but I'm glad you said that, because we do have that provision. We added in there to regulate drinking water delivery trucks as well. We've already, you know, we've already got draft regulations that have been in development for several years now by Julie Mendoza that would cover that. You know, when you get to airlines, though, airlines are, they are not regulated by states. They're regulated solely by the federal government, but we can definitely regulate trucks that deliver water. And that's what we intend to do.
Okay, sounds good. Well, thank you so much for your hard work, and thank you, Julie, for thinking about that too as well. And to EPA, you know, good job, good job. Thank you so much. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taitanu. Senator Munia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, thank you to Brian and Julie and Michelle and Nick, and then, of course, Dr. Jensen and the team at WEary. I was running a little bit behind in the public hearing, so I was only able to catch the last half of the presentation, but I look forward to rewinding the tape a little bit later and, you know, going through the entire presentation. I did have a couple of questions for Guam Water Works, and I feel bad that they're not here, but I'll work with you, Madam Chair, and send those questions through you so that you can send it to them. I only have one question for, maybe Brian can answer this, or anyone in the EPA team. So when Donald Trump took office, there were some executive orders that were regarding the US EPA. This bill and acts, the provision of the US Safe Drinking Water Act, have any of those regulations been suspended by any of the executive orders by the president regarding US EPA? And if so, what were they?
I'm not aware of any drinking water acts provisions that have been suspended. I know that several others have been, but I'm not aware of any drinking water rules that have been. But I'm not 100% sure, so if anyone else knows, please step up.
Okay, well, maybe we can clarify a little bit more through the chair, and then we can get some, you know, maybe some clarifications through the chair at a later time.
Okay, we'll do. Thank you. Thank you, Senator Munia. Yeah, I haven't heard anything regarding suspension of Safe Drinking Water Act rules, and perhaps even if the president did that, we would probably best not do that, follow that route.
Yeah, there has been, there has been some that was repealed or suspended or placed in review by the executive order. So I wasn't sure if maybe EPA was aware of any of those.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. So I know we're coming up on time. I believe we're supposed to end at 3:30 today, but I really appreciate all the dialogue that came in today. I think it was very helpful for us to understand, as well as the public. And, you know, we all want to ensure that Guam PA is successful in carrying out their primacy, regaining primacy and carrying it out. So, you know, I appreciate all the hard work that you put in, and, you know, just keep at it. We're almost there. And, you know, we're here to support Guam PA in ensuring that our water is safe to drink and that we can, you know, basically regain that ability to self-regulate here on Guam. So thank you again for everyone, to everyone here, and Sisus Massey. The time now is 3:29, and the Committee on Environment, Revenue, and Taxation and Procurement is now adjourned. Sisus Massey, thank you. Take care, everybody. Thank you.